Okay. Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA Section 403-A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board Meeting of August 20th, 2025. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session. You have the right to hear everything that is being said and look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you are unable to hear or see something. Please know that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair. We will then decide at what point to either ask staff or their applicant to respond. Chair may wait until after testimony is concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the chair at its sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the chair at its sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments, and the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shoreline, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings to the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay, so moving on to item number one, Old Business File 2025, Tac 09, Tac J30, Tac 47, Tac PS, Sanford Housing Authority. This is remaining on the table per the applicant's request. The next item is New Business File Number 2025, Tac 33, Tac ZC, Kennybunk Road, Scarborough Woods Zone Change Request. I understand that at the applicant's request, they would like us to table this. Is that correct, Jamie?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
There was an email in the packet from King Weinstein, a property owner. He requested it to table. He actually is going to be meeting with the IDC, Industrial Development Corp. He didn't say why, but to discuss, I guess, options. But he did ask to at least temporarily postpone it.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to table?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven zero, tabled.
We don't, we had to, we had to open the case to table it, but we don't have to officially open a public hearing because it's tabled.
If we opened it, then we would have to keep it open until we heard it finally, but...
That's my fault. I confused her right before the meeting, so that's, that's, that's my fault.
Okay. All right, so moving on to item number three, New Business File Number 2025, Tac 35, Tac FS, 1749 Main Street, Whispering Pines. Jamie, could you please orient us on this?
Yes, this is Whispering Pines Apartments, Whispering Pines Condominiums Airport Manor Apartments, 1749 Main Street, also on Airport Road. The applicant is proposing to construct a new 16-unit building kind of in between the two street frontages, connect the two existing parking lots with an access road with additional parking. It went to site plan a couple of weeks ago. Coming out of site plan, there was some conditions. Drew did respond to those conditions. Some of them, some of them we have removed from the suggested motion. Some of them are going to remain as conditions that need to be addressed after the fact, and a couple of them, staff didn't have time to review the changes, so while they might have met the conditions, we didn't have time to review them, so they're going to remain for now. There was one item coming out of site plan, essentially the recreational space. The ordinance requires recreational or open space for subdivisions. In this case, they're saying the large lawn in between the buildings is their outdoor recreational space. That's just a decision the planning board has to make whether they feel the lawn in itself constitutes enough recreational space for the unit count of that facility.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Drew Olahowski with Haley Ward, representing the applicant Scarborough Woods LLC. So as Jamie mentioned, we are here tonight seeking final subdivision approval for this project. The project was last before the board in June of 2024, so just over a year ago. There has been quite a delay from this last meeting, primarily because of one issue related to our title writer interest for this property. If you take a look at the existing conditions plan along Airport Road, there was a portion of our property where there was a discrepancy on who owned that piece of the property. So over the last year or so, the owner has been working with the city, and we did just receive a deed for the purchase of that piece of property. So the owner does now own this entire lot officially, so that was the main concern of what we've been dealing with and the real reason for the delay. Other than that, the site plan is very similar to as it was when it was last before the board. Most of our changes were minor and related to staff comments, as Jamie mentioned, which I feel at this time we have addressed all of those comments pretty thoroughly. With this last submission I did just a week ago, there were a few outstanding comments from the Fire Chief and Water Department, both of which we feel we can address easily enough with pretty minor changes to the site plan. The Fire Chief was concerned about access through the site for an emergency vehicle. We did have an emergency vehicle access plan on Sheet C102, where we did show that a vehicle could maneuver the site, but I guess there were still some concerns about tires overlapping non-paved areas. So again, I think we can address that fairly easily, just soften some of our ADI a bit more, and that shouldn't be an issue. So again, I feel at this point we've addressed all outstanding comments with this project, so I'd be happy to hear any further comments that the board might have, and I'll do the best I can to address them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before I open the public hearing, is there any additional comments from staff? All right, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask for anybody to, who would like to speak in opposition. Anybody on Zoom that wants to speak? All right, anybody who would like to speak as a proponent? Anyone who would like to ask a question or make a general comment? All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we can take it up for planning board discussion.
I'll start off with that the requirement for recreational space is vague at best, with no real hard standards. So it's kind of hard to require more, in my opinion.
Could you, yeah, my lap, my iPad is not working, so I can't actually see much on the screen. Can we zoom in on this set of planes that are on the screen now?
So this right here is the new building, and then these are the buildings that front on Main Street. These are the buildings that front on Airport Road. So essentially, there's this lawn area in what I would call the courtyard that they are proposing is the recreational space. When Airport Manor was originally created, there used to be an in-ground swimming pool, essentially below where this house is being, this apartment building is being constructed. That hasn't been in operation for 30 years that I know of, so it hasn't been used as a pool in a long time. But there's actually remnants of the pool where this building is being placed.
I just have a comment on the, the empty remaining lot that you're not touching as considered recreational space, but it's not constructed as a recreational space, it's just leftover space that you say, please recreate on. My first concern is that it's not, I don't see accessibility for those, you know, ADA people wheelchair or so on and so forth, so there's not direct pathways to an area. There's, there's no playground if it's family property. There's no gardening area. There's no just sitting area that somebody could actually use to say, this is, this is intended for recreational use. It's just remaining lot, so I was curious if that was somewhere in your plans at some point.
Yeah, so at this point, this courtyard area is maintained as a lawn, so again, for recreation, if people want to play lawn games, kids just play sports, that sort of thing. The owner also mentioned that it's a probably pretty popular area for people to sit and watch activities taking place on the airport. So again, that's another facet to it, but you are correct that there isn't a dedicated amenity in this area. It's really just a maintained lawn area.
And so it would be a decision where we would say, is just empty lawn considered recreation or leftover space? Or do we actually want a specific recreation, specific use?
So that's what it would come down to, is we can ask for more.
Correct.
But like Jase says, there is a standard issue we're trying to come through and be consistent.
Totally agree.
We have had other, other properties that we've required.
Yeah.
Every property. We consider this for every property that's being developed like this.
Right.
Every subdivision. Go ahead, Jase.
I just want a clarification from Jamie. One of the considerations usually is also the proximity to recreational space?
So yes, any ordinance that says that if there's public facilities in the area, they could utilize those. In this case, there is no public park or anything in the area. There is, there is one public baseball field at the end of Gatehouse Road, but it's not generally open to the public. It's actually a leased outfield, and you would have to traverse Gatehouse Road, which is an industrial subdivision road without sidewalks, so it wouldn't be safe for people to walk there, even if it was open to the public year round, which it is not. Other than that, there are no public recreational facilities within some distance of this property.
Other thoughts from the board?
I guess, what do you have in mind for recreational use? Do you have something specific in mind, or?
So other, other subdivisions that's come through in the last year or two, we had one that did a small little fenced-in area for, for dogs, if they allow pets. We have, most of them do a small little playground set for, for children. Most of them have a couple picnic tables or, or something like that underneath a tree. I don't think there's trees here, but, so historically, I will 100% agree with the applicant that a nice big lawn is a good open space, but historically subdivisions provide something for the tenants to, to do when they're outside. And again, I, I will agree with the chair, and I think Jase said it as well, our ordinance is not super specific on, on true requirements. We've talked a lot about the gray areas of the ordinance. This is one of those where it simply says it's up to the planning board to decide if what they are proposing for recreational satisfies the development. In this case, there's 40 existing apartments, I'm sorry, there's 37 existing apartments, three condos, and now we're proposing a 16-unit building. So there's a total of 56 units existent and or proposed on the site. So truly, it comes down to is, do you guys feel an open lawn is sufficient for recreation for 56 families? Or would you like to see something a little bit more formal? The ordinance would allow you to say either way. There is, there is no black and white answer here, which is what makes you guys' job a little bit tougher. It's...
Yeah. I mean, I'm conflicted on it, but all the other proposals didn't have the open lawn. You know, some of them had proposed walking trails because they had access to...
It was a wooded lot.
Yeah, I believe the industrial park development we recently approved. So I'm conflicted because they didn't have the option of the open lawn, and it is highly open to interpretation.
Well, I'm just going to add that, I'll reiterate one thing. You have two ADA parking spots, you're making accommodations for some people with disabilities, and you have no provisions for recreation, for access, even if it's a pathway for access.
And just for clarification, there's 10 ADA parking spots.
Well, you have 10 around the entire property. I'm talking about, thank you for that, but I'm just, it's been that way.
Right.
That's existing.
Right.
Now, you've added two more. Never had, I can't say to the history of how they, what the residents' experiences were, but we're not, we're not including, and I think it's important for all of us to think of that, that we're making this accessible for all people, and we're not accommodating that at all. So just think of that, even if it was a pathway.
Did you want to add something, Alex?
I just have a comment to, I guess, put in your brains for a minute, and then you guys can decide the gray area. I think Drew has done a lot of the projects recently for King and has done a great job. I think one of the differences in this project is we're surrounded by the AD zone, which doesn't allow residential. We're kind of surrounded by that and commercial with a highway out front and a road behind it with no sidewalks, no nothing. So I guess I have concerns of safety because while the housing is allowed here, there's a lot of units in one spot, and there's, I'm not disagreeing that a lawn is a recreational area. I just think where you have that much density in one spot with no options elsewhere to kind of walk to or go to, I'm not saying that it has to be a huge recreational amenity, but I think something might be nice just to keep people safe and in that area. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts on this?
Is there a lot of children living here, a lot of families, or is it...
I can't speak for that myself. I'd have to ask the owner. I'm not sure.
Subject to change.
Yes.
Because even if there isn't now, there could be.
There could be, yeah. I think it might be even more of a need for like playgrounds, equipment, if you've got more children.
All right, just to consider Scott's, Scott, Todd's point, sorry, with regards to the I'm not sure how we would propose something like that. Like, what are you, what are you referring to specifically?
I want to be nimble. The fact that we're, if it's just an open park, then there should be at least a solid surface pavement, asphalt pavement, that would bring people from the front to the, is there a back door to this building? Is there, is a corridor, so front, and it could be side doors? What does, how does someone get from the front to the back? Because you have one walkway in.
Yeah, so there is a walkway that you can see on the front of the building and to the doors on the sides, so that could be an option, just to extend that sidewalk way to the, to the rear of the building. There aren't doors on the backside, so we would have to come in from the side.
There are doors in the back of the building?
There, no, there's not.
There are none, right? So it's a main entrance in the front apartments, right? So somebody would, somebody who needed assistance, whatever, come out the front door and walk around the building into the grass from the front?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so...
It wouldn't be much work to just extend that side path, another 10 feet or so, to get it to the backyard?
To get it to the backyard?
Yep.
I mean, I'm a, I mean, that's a minimum. I'm not asking for a gazebo. I'd love a little sitting area, right? But that's, I'm not the developer, and it's not mine to say, but again, I think we're being fair to all people. We have to at least consider that.
No, no, I appreciate the clarification on what you're...
That's all. So if it's, if it's, it should be a solid three-foot minimum wide, you know the slopes, you know all that, but I'm assuming. So, but that it's a, it's an easily traversable area to at least bring people to the back. I don't, I wouldn't ask it to loop around, although somebody would, but at least to be able to access, access the back. To be, when someone was saying earlier, people would watch kids play, well, how does that person not get to watch it, you know, on this bumpy grass, right? You're pulling them from the back, so it's, that's all, it's a minimum that I would suggest. We have asked for, well, I've been asked for at different times, garden areas, park areas, cooking areas, I mean, those are all options. I'm not suggesting those, but those are recreational. Low, low apparatus playground areas, right? Not swings, but you know, real simple little things. Again, those are suggestions, but at a minimum, having it accessible with a pathway, that's solid surface, somebody could use on their own, would be a minimal ask.
Okay, thank you.
Anything for you guys?
I agree with Todd.
I'm just picturing my family, one of my kids down there, with children, with or without a handicap, and that's their haven, right? That's their, that's their world, and they are in a very tough spot down there. You know, you picture that, there is nothing around. They can't walk to the park up the street. So I don't know what our ability is, but I would want it to be not just a slab of concrete for three feet in the back, I'm sorry. I'd want more. I'd want to see a little plan, and I'd want to want to live there, right?
It would be nice to see the developer try to propose something. I just hate to see the planning board in a position where we're trying to design something for you. I mean, it would be nice to see the developer maybe try to bring something forward, an idea forward to this.
Yeah, I can have that conversation with him. I'm, I'm sure he'd be amenable to adding something more. It's, I can't speak for him right now, but I know he's done this kind of thing on other developments, so I don't expect it to be an issue here if that's what the, the board chooses.
Yeah, and I do think that there was enough concern here that we, that a lawn is not really going to be just, is sufficient.
Sure.
So Todd brought up, you know, small gardening area or a gazebo. I mean, yeah, to Lenny's point, we don't want to make the plan for you.
Sure.
Just like you can't speak for the applicant, we don't necessarily want to, we're not the engineers, right? We're not designing this.
It's understood.
So I think, I think I would, I would agree with you on that, is I'd like to see something a little more, a little more thought through and providing a more of amenity than just a lawn.
Sure.
I mean, I get it, the, the open space is nice, but 50-something units, if you have two kids in each one, that's 100 kids that don't, that don't have anything.
Sure.
So just my two cents on that.
These all condos?
Yeah, they will be.
There are currently two sold as condos that were sold prior to Mr. Weinstein's purchase. So essentially, there are condo docks primarily for the ones that front on Main Street. The condo docks do encompass the ones that front on Airport Road, but those ones, I was here when the previous owner owned it, the previous owner intended to make the, the Main Street ones condos and, at least at that point, leave the rear ones apartment. So there are two separate landowners, not landowners, two separate condo owners in the front building. Other than that, they are, the front building has been 100% condoized, but they are all owned and rented by Mr. Weinstein.
Oh. Is there an HOA?
There is a condo association, yes. Coming out of site plan, one of the conditions, what they, they updated the condo association documents, and they provided clarification that the condo association was given approval to do this. They did provide both those documents.
Setting aside the recreational space, is there anything else the board is concerned with on this property?
Do you think the staff can handle the rest of the conditions?
So most of the rest of the conditions are, I would say, minor in, in status, and a lot of them are just housekeeping items. The recreational space, where it's a planning board decision, if you want to grant staff the, the review of that, I can't say no, but I would, I would prefer that it get tabled and come back to you guys to have this discussion in two weeks than to put that on the staff because, again, just, just like you guys don't want to tell them how to do it. I, I don't want to read your minds on this is what you guys were thinking in tonight's conversation.
Got you. But the rest of it seems reasonable, right?
And if, and if, if it is tabled, I suspect eight of the 10 other ones will be off at that point too, because they were minor in basis where he could fix them in an hour. So if, if we do table it, I think it will be a cleaner approval, and you guys will get a chance to review what they propose for recreational space.
And the current residents, they're familiar with, obviously, they're, they're aware of this.
Yeah, that's correct. As Jamie said, we have the revised condo docs, those have been signed off on.
Right, all right.
So if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to...
I make a motion that we table this to allow everything to work out, and then we revisit it in two weeks.
Any discussion? All in favor of tabling? Seven zero.
Thank you.
Appreciate your understanding.
Thanks, no problem.
Thank you. Okay, good discussion, thank you. Moving on to Planning Director's Report.
On a similar but different topic, as we all know, the comprehensive plan has been slightly stalled due to Aaron Moriarty moving on to Green Pastures. That is out for RFP right now to, to hire out that service for us. We've tried for 10 years now to have an in-house planner do that. We haven't been able to make time for that to happen, so me and the city manager came up with a solution of we're, we're going to hire it out, we're going to keep local input, we're going to keep the same steering committee we have now, we're gonna, we're gonna keep the momentum that we've started, but to guarantee it happens, we are, we are officially going to farm out, I'm going to say 95% of it, with 5% remaining for, for us to all have a comment at the end. Where bids are due in a couple of weeks, we had a, we, you have to give consultants a chance to ask questions. That closed last week. I have to have the answers to them by Friday, so, and then they got three more weeks to actually submit the submittals, but we did receive quite a few questions from several, I think five different firms, so there's definitely interest in the RFP, which is great. So we'll be talking more about that process in the future. Last night at City Council, Economic Development spoke a little bit, and they, they spoke saying that they still feel there is roadblocks, challenges for developers in the process, and some of those, they didn't give many details, but one of them they brought up is the performance guarantee. And some of those, they didn't give many details, but, um, one of them they brought up is the performance guarantee question. So I bring this up to ask you guys your opinion. I, I am of the opinion that, uh, at least most of our ordinance revisions needs to wait till after the comprehensive plan, because the comprehensive plan is kind of what steers future zoning. So I, I don't want to do major ordinance rewrites prior to the comprehensive plan process. That said, where we are, um, on a slight delay in the comprehensive plan process, we might be able to do selective changes on things that will not be altered by the comprehensive plan process. And performance guarantees are one of them. Uh, so the comprehensive plan process has nothing to do with performance guarantees. So, um, is, are you guys, the planning board, would you, would you rather wait and kind of do everything at one fell swoop? Or would you prefer is, as staff time allows, um, for us to pick away at items that are not going to be altered by the comp plan to, to try to solve any potential roadblocks as quickly as possible?
Speaking just for myself, I want the board to chime in on this, but I would, I would rather do this iteratively. Take care of the small rocks, right?
Agreed, yep.
There's no sense in doing it all at once.
Right.
If it doesn't need to be, because it's gonna, that's gonna kill us.
Right.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of meat and potatoes that have to happen at once, but there, there are sections we can, we can pull out and, and try to, one, I think it'll give you guys more time to actually think about it and all of us time to think about it. But, um, and if we can, if we can fix some of the, those items that aren't affected by the comp plan ahead of time, we're, we're gonna be that much further ahead. I just, I wanted you guys' opinion.
What's the, what do they, what's the deal with the performance guarantees? I think it's too much.
So our performance guarantee is one of the biggest complaints that developers make to our, our economic development staff. Every municipality out there does performance guarantees in some way or the other. Some municipalities, it's a flat fee that says, okay, if you're building a parking lot, you put a hundred grand flat. Doesn't matter if you're building a Walmart parking lot or a Dairy Queen parking lot. It's a flat fee. Developers know what it is. They planned for it, et cetera. So I've been told over the years that developers prefer to know upfront what the cost is gonna be. So what, what developers complain about with our performance guarantee is that it is open-ended. It's not a, it's not a definitive thing. It's, okay, you give me an estimate, we review it. Matt Preventure reviews it. It's good. Um, and then it comes down to how do you release the funds? So we're, we're business friendly, in my opinion. You get ten thousand dollars worth of work done. You call up Matt. Matt comes out, looks, verifies ten thousand bucks is done. He'll release ten thousand bucks off the guarantee. Some communities say there are no draws. You, you do it. When you're a hundred percent done, you get it back. Um, so I think we're ahead on that game. Essentially what it comes down to, the, s, some of us have been here a long time. And historically, the, the, the projects that have caused the most angst in the community are the smaller projects. It's not the big developers. You get a Walmart that comes in here. They know there's performance guarantee. They know they're spending a million dollars on consultants. That's part of doing business. They know that. It's the smaller people that, that have no idea what a performance guarantee is. They come, they, they fight their way through planning board. They have our pre-construction meeting and at that pre-construction meeting, even though we told them at the pre-app, we told them at site plan, we taught them at planning board. It's in their approval. We get the, the pre-construction meeting and, okay, now it's time to talk about the performance guarantee. Oh my God, what, what is that? I, I gotta write you a check for ten grand? So I think what, I think what economic development staff would be looking for is, is more clarity so that there is no confusion. Now, in my opinion, sometimes when there's more clarity, it takes away some of the business friendly attributes that we use. Because I would prefer to say the performance guarantee is based off the scale of the project. Because if we go to, uh, like a community that has the, the one size fits all, you're adding three parking spots to Dairy Queen, you, you gotta write a performance guarantee for a hundred grand. It's twenty thousand dollars worth of work, but now they gotta go to Partners Bank and get a loan for a hundred grand. That to me is not business friendly. So, um, me and Matt Preventure, um, have been talking about the performance guarantee thing for about a year. He has done a lot of review of surrounding communities, both in Maine and New Hampshire. I actually, just two weeks ago, um, asked him to start compiling some of that data because I knew I was gonna come to you guys and say, do you want us to start picking away at the things that the comprehensive plan doesn't affect? And I assumed you guys were gonna say yes, so I, I have already started working on it. So like on, on this topic, we'll come forward with spreadsheets of what all the different communities and we'll poke out the communities most familiar to Sanford. And, um, it's not gonna be an easy conversation. Uh, performance guarantees are tough, tough conversation.
I mean, on the railroad Ave, the hillside crossing condominiums, we looked at it in site plan the other day. There was a lot of stuff in there that I didn't even realize. I mean, the road going in there was, it, it's not even finished yet. So if that developer just skips town, that's why we need a performance guarantee so the town can go in and fix it.
Agreed.
Correct. And again, nobody has too much heartburn over the large hundred unit condo complexes. We've, we don't hear complaints from those developers. The, the issues are the, the smaller, um, smaller companies because, let's say I'm a small restaurant opening up and I have to do some site work to, to make the parking lot a lot bigger. Most of these people are going into it with very little funds in the bank. So even if they have to write a check for five hundred bucks, sometimes that five hundred bucks is, is a million dollars. We don't say you have to write a check. We, we give three options. You can write a check. You can get a performance bond.
Right.
Which is an insurance policy through your insurance agent. Or you can go to the bank and get a letter of credit. A letter of credit is basically a home equity loan that they say, okay, you have twenty thousand dollars worth of equity. I'm gonna give the city of Sanford a letter saying that we're gonna cover up to twenty thousand dollars of site improvement should they fail. So we give three options, so they don't have to come up with cash out of pocket. But again, sometimes you already went to your bank and got that twenty thousand dollar loan to, to do the work. You can't get twenty thousand dollars more for, for a performance guarantee.
Do the smaller projects that just go to staff review require performance guarantees as well?
Um, yes. Any commercial project that's doing site work has to do a performance guarantee.
So I tee this up. If we take a look at this, our answer could be there is no change, right? Because in reality, everything you've talked about, everything that we do currently, everybody should be aware, right? They're, they should not be learning about their perform, we talk about it here, which is well before the performance guarantee. I mean, before the, uh, pre-construction meeting. So it should be well known. I get that, that there's a cost, but that cost is to protect the city and it's to protect the community as a whole, because I as a taxpayer don't want to pay to clean up.
No, no.
Either. So that's the whole.
I agree with that a hundred percent. Now, one of the thoughts that me and Matt have been mulling around is, any work within a public right of way is a hundred percent you are covered for the full cost because we have to protect you guys as taxpayers, um, the, the cost of those improvement. But on, on a site, let's, let's say, let's say I'm opening up a sporting goods store. And I'm halfway through the project, the, the site is in various states of, of, of construction. And the world falls out and all of a sudden everybody hates baseball. So my sporting goods store is no longer a viable option. And I decide I'm gonna cut my losses and I'm gonna leave. One thought process that a few, only a couple have is, okay, do we really as a city need to go in and build out that site to the plan? Or does we as a city have to go in and stabilize that site so that it doesn't become a, an environmental or public nuisance? So our ordinance right now says you give us a performance guarantee for the full cost of site improvements. With the assumption that if, if I walk, we're gonna go in and finish those site improvements. So some community says, I'm not gonna finish the site improvements. I, I need to have enough money in the bank to stabilize that site so it doesn't become an issue. That's an option.
Yeah, that's how DEP works with, um, like gravel bits.
So we, we might change our ordinance to say all site improvements. We might change our ordinance to say all site improvements within a public right of way is covered plus, okay, it costs a thousand dollars an acre to stabilize. Okay, you got a two acre site, so you gotta cover these improvements. You gotta put two thousand bucks in escrow for stabilization should you fail and, and then that's our performance guarantee. So those are the type conversations I think we're gonna go, be coming forward with. We're, we're pretty good at thinking outside the box. Um, we're pretty good at getting creative. I don't really want to get into full discussion of them tonight. I'm not prepared, but I, I, again, I just, um, I was a little bit disappointed when I found out the comprehensive plan process is gonna be delayed again. This has needed to happen for ten plus years. So part of the way I was hopeful to keep everybody excited was to start picking away at some of the, the non-comprehensive plan related stuff so that we don't lose the momentum. And if we can fix a potential roadblock to development and along the way, we checked off two checkbox. Um, I think it'll make everybody happy.
Yeah, makes sense. Anything else?
We're still getting quite a few applications and stuff in. Um, we, we still have quite a few that's coming down the pipeline. As always, I want to thank you guys as volunteer citizens and the lovely staff sitting there at the table. We're, we're working everybody pretty hard right now, but everybody's doing a pretty good job.
I got a quick question. Um, trying to go in a different direction. Do you know if anything is still happening with Harbor Freight Tools? Have they abandoned that project?
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Harbor Freight?
Harbor Freight Tools. Have they abandoned their project or are they still moving in? Nothing?
What about Stent Trust?
Uh, we had a pre-application meeting with, uh, the Chinburg, the company that has them, the contract, uh, Monday. It was this week, I think.
How good was it?
They are moving forward.
No way. Really?
Yes.
That's big. Thank you very much. Anything else? Cause my wife always asks me, why, what did you learn today?
Anything else?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Any communications from the board? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Seven zero.